Good evening. I call to order the meeting of the Gladstone City Council and Gladstone School Board Joint Work Session for, what is this, Thursday, November 30th, 2023? It is 5:32 PM. This is the little spiel I read at the beginning of all these meetings. The city of Gladstone is abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560, which requires the governing body of the public body to the extent reasonably possible to make all meetings accessible remotely through technological means and provide opportunity for members of the general public to remotely submit oral and written testimony during meetings to the extent in-person oral and written testimony is allowed. Therefore, this meeting will be open to the public both in person and virtually using the Zoom platform, the instructions of which were printed on the agenda for the meeting. However, since this meeting is a work session, no public comment will be allowed. We'll go over our agenda a little later on. Jackie, would you like to tell us what's up next?
Food. So we actually have high rocks who catered for us tonight. And if you go right through this room in here and help yourself to a plate and come back, then we'll let everybody get seated and then we'll start our discussions.
That's everybody, right? Everybody.
Whoever wants to eat.
I think we're good. I think we're good as far as quantity. So, yes, down this hall and bring your food back. Create a place on your table and let's eat. So while we're eating, I think we'll try to get started while you're finishing up. And I apologize for sort of taking the lead on getting started this. We're a joint meeting. We have two chairs here tonight. Tracy Obergrant chairs the school board. And I'm sure she shared all the same sentiments I did about the importance of abiding by guidelines set forth in House Bill 2560.
I wrote.
So let's go around and for the school board members and council members and staff that are at this table, we'll go around first to introduce ourselves. And then it would be helpful to know the other people that are in the room as well, some of whom we'll be hearing from later tonight. So I'm Michael Milch, the mayor of Gladstone.
I'm Tracy Obergrant, the chair of the school board.
Veronica Reckles, City Council.
Elsa Long, School Board. I'm Jackie Best, the city administrator. And if you could do us all a favor, since we're recording, is to use your microphone when we talk, just so it can pick up. We don't have to have individual microphones for each person. So, thank you.
I'm Bob Stewart, Superintendent.
All right, and we'll start back here at the city recorders table.
Hi, John Schmuber, Chief of Police.
Marcy Jory, Economic Development and Tourism, City of Gladstone.
Good evening, I'm Brian Stewart. I'm an Assistant Chief with Clackamas Fire District.
Hello, I'm Jeremiah Patterson, Assistant Superintendent.
All right, and we'll get the folks in the. All right, welcome all of you. Thank you for coming tonight. The public school system is one of the most important pieces of social infrastructure in our community. So I'm glad that we make a point to have these shared joint meetings and get together and talk about issues of common concern. It's been said that the public schools don't just serve the public, they create the public. And so the education and training and learning that goes on in our school system really benefits the city at large. And that's one of the wonderful things that we have in common with each other. So we have several items on our agenda tonight. The administrator and the superintendent and the board chair and I got together and worked these things out. We'll add maybe one or two other things along the way. But we wanted to begin with just a report on Gladstone Police Services and Clackamas Fire Services. So we will start with Police Chief John Schmuber.
Hi, thank you, greetings, everybody, and thank you for the opportunity. I want to share about three items of, I think, that are the most important of what's going on with the Gladstone Police Department as it relates to the school district. The first one is the behavioral health component we're working on right now at the police department. Over the years, we developed a strong relationship with Clackamas County Behavioral Health, serving the Gladstone community. And we're currently working towards a stronger partnership through a two-year pilot project program, embedding a dual-certified mental health service coordinator with the police department itself. This position would be full-time FTE, dual-certified in both mental illness and drug addiction. Gladstone continues to experience calls with services that involve both people in crisis and drug addiction. And at a lot of times, they're one in the same. So there's no deviation between them. Having a certified mental health coordinator housed with the Gladstone Police Department allows for good communication, interaction between the officers and service coordinator, and should enhance the services both for our community and the police department. And this would also be subject to the school district and uses for the school district for our youth if needed. So when we get calls for service there. And the whole idea behind it is immediate services and attempt to treat and resolve problems in hopes of reducing the calls for service. So ideally, you're helping people and reducing the calls at the same time. And I'm happy to take questions at the end. That's just a brief overview of behavioral health component. The other component I want to talk about is the SRO position. Many of you are aware that not just us, but departments are experiencing staffing issues that relates to hiring police officers. That's just not a trend for Gladstone. It's a trend, not only the metro area, but the region and nation as a whole. Hiring qualified candidates has been and continues to be a challenge. Your police department has been and will continue to be committed to our youth to ensure their safety and security, supporting the growth and development. Although current staffing has prevented GPD from staffing an SRO position, we have adapted with that and used on-duty personnel, one, to coordinate and be visible within the schools at times, but mostly visible outside the schools. And we prioritize calls for service, especially during the day, to assist that. You're, not just me, that's always been a goal. And the youth safety and security has always been one of my goals since I've been here. But your officers feel the same way. And we've worked together to develop a strategy on hiring an SRO and announcing for an SRO lateral officer position. That's been agreed to. We've since advertised for that position. The good news is, we have some interest. So, and we're looking at that now. We have officers starting tomorrow, Friday. We have a first off, new officer coming in. And we have conditional offers made out and accepted and just waiting for successful completion of the final phases. For most of you that don't know, hiring of a police officer takes a while. There's a lot of steps, a lot of phases, a lot of testing that has to go through and to be successful. Plus, they have to make our fit. So they have to fit what the Gladstone community is going to be looking like and what we're doing. We don't want to bring someone in that's not going to be a fit because then that causes problems. And so we're very selective in what we do. And sometimes that means that we have to run short. And that's what we're doing. We're having difficulty staffing, but we're getting a lot better, a lot healthier, and we're on a trend upwards, that I can tell you. The final thing I'd like to just talk about a little bit is we participated in a reunification, critical event training with the school district tabletop exercise, which was great. And I hope I'm, am I stealing your thunder there? Okay, that's all right. Yeah, yeah, you got a plate of food, though. The police department participated in that reunification exercise. And the purpose is develop strategies on returning kids to their parents' guardians during critical events and evacuations. There was great discussion, great ideas that came from the tabletop, which was exciting. And we plan to move forward to have a training exercise that not just involves the reunification piece, but with the school district, but also involve law enforcement and fire response to a critical event. So ideally, we combine them both as a school district is training for their reunification piece. While they're doing that at one location, we'll be doing the same thing only in concert with that training. And so to give everybody an opportunity for training and so on. So the table exercise was a great kickoff point to that. And that's really, that's really what I have to offer for updates right now from the police department. I'm happy to try and answer any questions.
John, let's touch a little bit on this partnership with the behavioral health position because the city is part of the National Opioid Settlement Fund. And what that means for the Gladstone is that probably for the next seven to 10 years, we will receive between $7,000 and $10,000 a year. And it's got to be used on opioid mitigation efforts. Well, for Gladstone, that's not a lot of money compared to other cities that are receiving several hundred thousand. We currently have $50,000 in a reserved account that has to be used specifically for that. And so the police chief was creatively partnering with Clackamas County, and they're willing to pay the remainder of the salary for this position. And so at this point, we're waiting for the county to finalize that job description, get their approval, and then we'll come back to the city council with a contract. And we're hoping that the first part of 2024, that we'll be able to go out and recruit for that position.
Yeah, and it's really unique, which we would call it a pilot program. It's going to be a two-year program. Because the opioid money has to deal with addiction and opioid use, we do find both components, the mental illness and that. But what's great about that is we have the resource with us. So if it's just a mental illness issue, they can get the resources out there immediately. So that's the bonus of having them embedded with the police department and the city as a whole.
Mr. Mayor, could I jump in with something real quick?
You may.
Thank you. So, because it goes right along with the topic you're just talking about. We've also been involved in an initiative with Clackamas County Juvenile over the last year and a half around early identification of students who may have stressors in their life that are very difficult for them and some remediation of that. So I'd like to ask Jeremiah if he could kind of give us an overview to the group so you kind of know what has transpired up to date. I do believe this will go hand in hand with the opioid fund, and they all just work together really well.
Okay, we were approached well before COVID. Bob had early discussions with Director of Clackamas County Juvenile System about the prospect of looking at implementing something that's been going on in King County, Washington for a while now. And it's a mental health screener that is used in high school settings and middle school settings. They asked for interest, they got some interest from around the county. We stayed at the table through COVID. And I believe still, we're the only school district that's implemented. So in the spring of '22, we did a pilot, very small-scale pilot, just to experience the screening effort. And then we launched it last year with freshmen at the beginning of the school year. That went well enough that the staff decided they wanted to expand that to sophomores. So our current sophomores and juniors have all been through that. And then again, this year, working with freshmen. And we are now looking at the pilot this year being at our middle school. So what's exciting about it is that we've always been dealing with the kind of issues that are raised during the screening. We're just doing so reactively and chaotically sometimes. So this gives us a methodology to screen an entire cohort of students, classroom by classroom, at a pace that's comfortable enough that we feel like we're able to respond at the level appropriate for whatever it is that's coming up, be it alcohol and drug issues, body image, eating disorder, eating, these kinds of the relationship issues, and then make the appropriate referrals. What's been really nice is that through the partnership with Clackamas County Juvenile, they've funded something we had desired for a while, which is a partnership with Latino Network. So the first school district in Clackamas County to host Latino Network staff in our building to be able to run affinity groups and just regular affinity opportunities as well as participate in the intervention. It's been a really nice partnership. We were pretty nervous about it at the beginning, just worrying how much it would tax our counseling staff. And it's always a concern. But, you know, it speaks for itself that the staff wanted to double up its efforts last year. So it's been nice.
Thank you, Jeremiah. Chief Schmuber, you nodded some recognition when he mentioned the Latino organization. Do you want to share our own connection with that?
Yes, so the city is also involved with Latino Network, which is nice, just kind of a different program. The idea behind when we, if we have to charge a juvenile, take a juvenile into custody, trying to keep them out of the system is the goal, which is the goal of the SRO program at the same time. And with that, if it's a low-level offense, that instead of going into the system, they could be assigned to Latino Network and engage in a contract with Latino Network, whether it be community service, certain rules they need to follow and so on, and take care of that more of a mentorship than anything else. There was one time we tried to hook up one of our, and it's specifically for Gladstone youth, attach a Gladstone youth that got in a little bit of trouble and connect them with the nature park group and do their community service during one of their cleanup days. I'm not sure whether that evolved or not, but Latino Network had that child. And so far, they've been fairly successful. So there are some that aren't successful, but so far, I don't have the numbers. But for the most part, they've been pretty successful, so.
We have so many things in common, and that's what's so great about this group coming together. And before we move on to the fire chief, I just wanted to say thank you to all of you who supported the police and fire levy. As you know, they were just renewed at a very high, above 72% rate. And when we met in the spring as a group, we thought, okay, at the next meeting, let's have the police chief and fire chief come and talk a little bit. And we just transitioned to Clackamas Fire District about a year and a half ago. And I know my council will support when I say it's been phenomenal, the transition, the services that they provide. And Assistant Fire Chief Brian Stewart is here tonight to talk a little bit about Clackamas Fire.
Thank you, Jackie, appreciate that. And excited to be here with everyone. And I appreciate Jackie touching on the levy and Chief Schmuber touching on the reunification drill. That's all I have, no. So I thought tonight, what I might do, since some of the counselors have been new since we've come on board, and then certainly we have school district directors here and some staff here, I thought I would walk through a little bit more about the district as a whole and give a little bit of a background, and then certainly happy to answer any questions. But before I get started with us, I'd like to take a moment and recognize firefighter Bryton Flowers, gosh dang it, who passed away on November 19th. He's a Gresham firefighter, passed away from occupational leukemia. He served his community for 15 years. His son serves with Gresham Fire now. It's our honor to recognize him, and he's going to be laid to rest on Saturday. Anyway, I appreciate his service to his community directly and the community at large. With that, now getting back to Clackamas and who we are and what we do. Clackamas Fire has recently gone through a reevaluation of what our ethos is, what our values are. So we had a new fire chief come in about three years ago from inside. And I got hired as his assistant chief from inside as well. And he led us on a course of what his priorities were, what values he thought we needed to instill. As he's coming into a new organization, he took what he knew about the organization, what he had talked about, what he had learned from individuals over years and over some really precise questioning about the year before as he got promoted to a lower level and was trying to get the lay of the land. So he crafted some values and direction for us. And this past August and September, we did some surveys. And we did a, so 274 people in the organization, and I think about 70% responded to the surveys about how we're doing and what our values are. Then we did a two-day workshop on our ethos and our values. And it was really kind of cool to see that a lot of what he had learned through the organization and brought as what he thought was important was reaffirmed by, I think we had 70 people in the room for two days. So about a third to a fourth of our organization. So that was pretty neat. We did change our purpose statement. So there's a lot of them out there. But our administrative staff and our response personnel came up with sworn to serve, dedicated to save. One of the things that we do differently in Clackamas, I'm a sworn individual, I wear a uniform. You would think of me as a sworn individual. The fire chief, a year ago or so, decided to swear in all of our administrative staff, all of our support staff. We all serve the same mission. So I think that's a really positive thing. I'm sorry, I'm still thinking about Brian here. So who do we serve and what do we do? If you look at the map on the wall you've got there, you see most of our service area. The service area in green is our legal boundaries. And then you see that little pink section off to the left, that's certainly Gladstone. And that's where we were when we came together with Gladstone a year and a half ago. This July 1st, we started providing all services to Sandy Fire District 72. So just to the east side of that map, you'd see another 77 square miles of coverage that we now respond to out of three fire stations up there. So all together, we have 24 active fire stations or 24 fire stations and serve just over 300 square miles, about 30,000 calls a year. About 1,700, 1,800 of those are in Gladstone. And certainly Engine 322 responds to most of those, but they also respond to a number of calls outside of just Gladstone. So one of the things that's neat about any collaboration is the synergy and the efficiency that you get in those. So our contract's been able to provide three firefighters ALS coverage 24/7 to the city of Gladstone. But that apparatus is closer just on the other side of the city line than Engine 303 or Engine 309 over in Holcomb or Engine 315 over in the John Adams Station by the Oregon City Library. So this has been a really positive thing in terms of response within Gladstone and the neighboring areas. So in addition to providing the local piece in fire and EMS, if you think about what we do, it's pretty holistic. Clackamas Fire is, I'm pretty darn proud of us. We do a lot of good stuff outside of the key things that you can think of, public education, which consists of just being engaged in the public. And the crews here, the staff, are having a heck of a time enjoying being out there with Friends and Family Night over at the Civic Center, the picnics, all those things. Like, they're enjoying being out here. It's a neat, small-town feel. But that's part of that public education. It brings that, just like the tabletop exercise, it gets people connected before there's a need. So I think that's a helpful piece, and it's just fun. But we do that, we do hands-only CPR in schools, we do fire safety education, we work with AMR on water education, water safety education. We provide fire inspection services to the city of Gladstone, which includes the school district buildings. We provide technical rescue, whether it's high angle. Just this last month, I think it was 30, 40 feet down a high embankment off of Highway 224 out in Mount Hood. They cut the roof off of a pickup truck, I think it was, that was hanging off the side of Embankment, got two people out. Just really high caliber folks, whether they work on engines, trucks, the wildland crews, the water rescue teams, our ALS transport ambulances. We have a couple ambulances that we run kind of as backup to AMR, but we'll also use them as first-out ambulances depending on proximity and call criticality. So we do, we do a ton of stuff. And we do that with about 300 people, including our staff, our admin and support staff, our career firefighters. And then we have a contingency of any given time, 50 to 70 volunteer firefighters that work at a number of our stations. We were fortunate that the community supports us here and supports the city of Gladstone and renewed the levy so we can continue providing the level of coverage that the community asked for. And then outside of that, in May, our legal boundary voters voted and approved the levy as well. And so that's over a period of a number of years. We'll hire an additional 62 firefighters and fund a bunch of capital equipment needs for us. And that's going to increase service kind of wall-to-wall. We have some stations that are currently volunteer-only. And as awesome as our volunteers are, they're not there 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they're not paramedics. So we're going to be able to bolster some of those, a couple of those stations to that level of service. We're going to be able to add additional firefighters back on fire engines that we lost due to some financial challenges a few years ago. And we're going to be able to put up a couple of what we're terming quick-response vehicles, which allows us to use smaller, lighter vehicles for less acute calls so we can keep the big, heavy apparatus with the greater staffing for the cardiac arrests, for the vehicle extracations, for the house fires. So that first due unit that you need is the right unit going to your house, going to the roadway, going to the forest land, whatever it may be. We're involved through the state and across the nation. I've spoken over the last few months, certainly during the summer, about wildland and our involvement with state mobilizations. And if you remember the 2020 wildfires, we had help from across the state and the local area coming back. So we do that, and we help across the nation. Crew 30, which is our wildland hand crew. We're the only municipal department within the state. I say municipal, we're technically a rural fire protection district. We're the only department within the state that has a hand crew. And Crew 30 just got back from two weeks out in Kentucky. So, yeah, I didn't know that Kentucky burned in November, but apparently it does. So we were happy to be able to support that. Let's see, other pieces. Last piece, I think it ties into, again, trying to find the right resource for the right condition and the right circumstance. We're working with Clackamas County Public Health, and we're going to essentially be the grant providers or the service providers for a grant, which will put three community paramedics and a halftime clinic coordinator for us to help reduce recurrence of calls, making sure that people in their homes or in their place where they're receiving services are able to get the social services they need, the medical services they need. And again, that focuses on getting the right resource to them and not encumbering the fire engines, the fire trucks, to provide those services. But we want to make sure that they have those wraparound pieces where we can provide them. So that's a little bit about us. Again, it's been our pleasure, really has been our pleasure to serve with the city of Gladstone. So happy to answer any questions.
I just wanted to share that we still own the Gladstone Fire Station, and we have a subcommittee, two elected officials. So Councilor Mindy Garlington and Councilor Greg Alexander. And then Clackamas Fire District has two of their board members. And we meet on a quarterly basis and talk about things of mutual interest. But the one takeaway that I think of for this group is that there is a demand for firefighters and police officers. And how do we get that from our high school students' interest into that profession? And that's something that we need to be working together on.
And either one of you might be able to answer it. When you talk about the critical event training that you did, what's the biggest takeaway that parents could have? In your, you're saying, you're talking about getting kids home safe. What's the biggest thing for parents to know? Maybe there's a couple of things that you could share.
I will do my best to try and answer your question because it's a very complex, a lot of moving parts when you talk about reunification. So typically, what would happen is for reunification, if something was to occur at one of the schools, they would go up like to the Seventh Day Adventist camping area for the reunification. It's secure because we have to account for every child, right? And that's really where the school's going to focus on and their staff's going to focus on that and have parents meet there to pick their kids up if there needs to be an evacuation.
Okay.
If that makes sense. So, and that information will get delivered probably, likely, Jeremiah can answer this, or Bob, to the school, how that process would work. So it would go out to the parents that way. We would respond and deal with, essentially, we respond to deal with the event. The school's response is to deal with the children, and we're in support of that.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Absolutely. I had no idea what the start of that would be, so thank you for sharing that.
All right, would you like to introduce the next item, Lawrence?
Sure.
So, Mindy, just a little more on your question. It's a complicated process. If you think about an elementary school, that if we had a fire, say, in the kitchen, and we had to evacuate the building, and it's in December. and we had to evacuate the building and it's in December and it's cold outside. And we need to get kids somewhere that they can be in protection. But we also have to know which kids we have at that location. And we have to transport them to that location. And then we have to have a method that once they're there and they're released to the parents, that we're releasing them to the right parent because it may be the case that a child has some type of order that they can only be, go with a certain parent. So you just think about all the logistics of trying to pull that off, but it's a really complicated process.
Especially today, I mean, when I was a child, you just, they'd said, go home. Off we went hoping that mom was at home, you know? Um, so, and I, you know, I see all the kids getting dropped off by car and things like that. And I think to myself, how do you move that many kids? I mean, high school students are one thing. You can say walk over there to that football field and don't move until I tell you. But little kids, it's a little bit, it would be different. And parents, I would be frantic as a parent, you know, knowing that my child wasn't exactly where I dropped them off. So that's, it's, that's interesting to know that, you know, it's good to know that our kids have that safety net in writing, knowing that everyone around them knows exactly what's going to happen, when it happens. And I give kids a lot of credit because generally they know more than parents do when things like this happen, you know? You're right. They, they, you know, fire drill, know exactly what we're supposed to do, you know, all of that kind of stuff. So that, that's just good to know.
So I, I just want to make sure that I recognize that, that John and Brian have been just super at being at the table, have been willing to meet with us to think through what those logistics are um, from all their expertise and their knowledge that they, they bring to it. But I also want to recognize that Jeremiah has taken the point from the school district side of things to make sure that we get everything lined up the way we need to have it lined up, but we get the right people in the room to have the right conversation. So, uh, the three of them have, uh, uh, it was a pleasure, the first time I'd been Brian was at that, um, session. And it was a pleasure to work with you guys.
Thank you.
I want to say one more thing, kind of in regard to Councilor Garland's question. I happened to be on the campus of the elementary school a month or so ago when there was an unexpected fire alarm went off. Um, you know, they, they usually know when there's going to be a fire drill and it's a, a ring, 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 and everybody's so rehearsed. And the teachers all know it's coming and the students walk out and do what they're supposed to do. This was something that no one in the school knew was, knew was going to happen because apparently some dust and event was sensed by a sensor that releases an alarm. And it, it wasn't just a bell. I mean, this was ear shattering loud stuff that scared a lot of kids. But the way that the staff at the school snapped to and knew exactly what to do in making sure that all the children, including several who were there in, in the cafeteria at lunch, we usually don't have fire drills during lunch. Were out on the playground where they were supposed to be. Staff and volunteers grabbed, uh, laminated lists, class lists. So they knew which children were, were to be there and they were very carefully checking and making sure that everyone there, that nobody was in a restroom or somewhere else in the building at the time. The way that the school staff is trained to deal with these unexpected events is just phenomenal. I was so impressed. I was just walking out of the cafeteria when, when it happened. And, you know, when an alarm goes off, those electromagnets that hold the big doors release and these huge heavy doors come slamming shut. And I didn't know if, what kind of incident was going on. But I turned and I thought, should I go back in the cafeteria where the children are? And I saw teachers coming out of the teacher's lounge, running toward where the children were responding like first responders in an emergency. This is a well-trained professional staff, uh, at John Wetton, and I'm sure it's the same way at the other, at the other facilities too. And we, you have to prepare for the worst possible case scenario. And even something that turned out to be, you know, a false alarm, a minor thing was frightening to staff. It was probably a little frightening, uh, I mean, frightening to children for sure, a little frightening to staff. But the way they worked together to calm down the kids, to make sure that everybody got through this. And it turned out to be, you know, uh, and, and our, our own local Clackamas Fire, uh, uh, people came on staff, discovered where the, uh, you know, the source of the alarm and was able to reassure everyone that it wasn't anything, there was no heat, uh, in the, in that source. It, it's just one more thing that impressed me about the way we train our staff and our personnel and our volunteers in our school system. So I wanted to add that.
Thanks, Michael. Um, those are practiced once a month. And they're recorded so that we know that we have practiced them. And, uh, those are practiced once a month. Uh, Jeremiah needs to be duly noted that the mayor needs to be trained on how to get out of the building. And I watched Stacy smiling over there because she can relate so much, right? Stacy's a principal of an elementary school and so she can really relate to everything we're saying tonight.
May I ask one quick, uh, follow-up question of Chief, Chief Schmuber before we keep going? Um, I'm really, really pleased to hear about the behavioral health component of what you were sharing. I am curious, I have a couple of follow-up questions if that's all right. Um, first of all, just to make sure, just for clarification, what you're describing is, is a position that, first of all, is that correct? You're describing a position, correct?
Yes, we're describing a position.
Okay. And I'm, I'm curious what the vision is around, um, how that position might work in tandem with the school district, obviously. Um, and then I'm also curious around if there's any vision around for that particular position, how the mental health, behavioral health components, um, are, will or won't be sort of infused into the whole of the police department. Um, what, what is this, what exactly is the scope of that?
So the scope's still being designed. We have a rough draft of the scope, um, because it's new and we're just still moving forward. And we're waiting for the county to make sure the financing comes, comes through. But we have an idea of the scope, uh, some of it's based off what they're doing already in Wilsonville. Uh, county's, uh, working in Wilsonville right now, only the city is paying for that position. This is a pilot program that we're using for a dual certified position. So it's going to be a little different. So a lot of changes will probably come along the way. But, uh, having them embedded, meaning they'll have office space in the police department. So 40 hours a week is what we're talking about right now with the police department, with communications, with our officers and everything else. So, um, we start there and we'll build it from there and how it's going to work, but it'll be a joint conversation.
Great. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, um, before we move on, I want to, to the bus transportation, I just want to thank both the police chief and, and the, the assistant, um, fire chief for speaking tonight. And, uh, Brian, I just want to say, I didn't know you're, you're, you're friend, but I know that firefighters are family. And so I, I was very, very sorry for your loss. So m- moving on, um, we have had some changes and some options and things that I don't know, Bob, if you're, I'm assuming you're going to discuss about um, our bus transportation facility. So this has been going on, uh, for a little while now. I'm going to let Bob take over.
Um, so I'll, I'll get it started and then I'm going to introduce, uh, Rachel Lopez Hopper, who's our, uh, finance director for the school district to talk a little bit about our planning, um, as it goes forward. So many of you may remember that, uh, Rinka's Transportation was the transportation of school bus services in Gladstone. Probably from the very beginning of whenever Gladstone started transporting students until Bob sold the business in the early nineties. And, um, so for all those years, he was it. He, he, um, the buses belonged to Gladstone School District. Uh, he provided all of the contracted service to move those buses around town. He also owned the land where the buses set, which was on 82nd Avenue. Uh, you've probably seen that if you've driven down 82nd Avenue, you see all of our school buses sitting there. That was the bus yard, the little building out front we knew as the bus barn. So when Bob sold the business, um, then the contract went out for bid. And, uh, at the time it was laid law, transportation is the one that, uh, won the bid. But we did not want the, um, successful bidder to also have control of the property where the bus is set because that would have given him too much leverage in negotiations with the two things being in their control. And so we worked out an arrangement with Bob to lease that property back from him. And we've done so for 20 plus years. And, uh, Bob passed away, uh, a couple of years ago. And, uh, uh, the property went to his heirs, his heirs decided to sell it. Uh, we were not notified that the, there was a, um, possible sale of the property. And, uh, before, by the time we were notified, they already had a buyer and, um, the property was secured. So that leaves a dilemma. Um, the nice thing about having the bus yard where it was, we didn't spend money having drivers drive from wherever that bus yard might be to get into Gladstone. And we didn't spend money on the mileage of the buses transporting from to and from wherever that location might be. And, um, so, uh, we needed to, to go on a search. We explored several different options as to different things that we could do. And, uh, we settled on, we were, we've always been curious. We'd never have gone as far as really looking into it. But we'd always been curious whether we owned enough property back behind, uh, the stadium on the athletic field that could be re- reconfigured to support a bus yard. And so we commissioned civil engineers, uh, to do a study of, of that, create a design for us and, uh, and do the early projections of whether that was sufficient space. Turned out it is. It's, uh, it's sufficient space. Um, and now we, we're going through the process, uh, working with the city for, um, getting that permitted. We hope that's all set and ready to go so that by the time, um, our lease expires on June 30th for that yard. So we hope by July 1, we have a place to move our buses. And, um, so that's kind of the, the nutshell of the history behind what we're doing and why. Um, and so I'll turn over Rachel to talk a little more about kind of logistically, where are we and what are the next steps?
All right. What's going around the table, um, is the synopsis of what Bob just very eloquently stated, as well as a site plan that we have presented to the city of Gladstone um, for review. And so this property, as Bob mentioned, is right behind the, um, stadium grandstands, if you will, and currently houses our maintenance, um, facility. There's a lot of, um, piled up earth work from various periods of construction that have taken place on the high school campus that would be, would be cleared. And so, um, essentially what we're looking for is the, um, placement of our bus yard that will house 21 buses, half of which are the smaller, um, buses, half of which are the full-size buses. Um, in a secured lot and shared, uh, tenancy with our maintenance property. So the project itself would consist of, um, grading and paving of the lot, lighting, addition of construction to the building that would provide for a break room, restrooms for the staff. We call it a carpet really, but it's just a covered area so that, um, light maintenance can be done on the buses that are there. Um, our third-party provider for transportation services has a separate site where they do their heavy maintenance of their equipment. That would not be done on this property. They would just need coverage from the rain because it does rain here occasionally. Um, so that as they do things like bulb replacement, belt replacement, they can do that undercover. Um, the other portion of the, um, the project that's for consideration is just at the top of the sheet near the, sort of the red stripe that represents the track. Um, and what, what has historically happened on this site is that during, um, activities at the stadium, our ADA access to the stands has been going through this maintenance property. And so we want to make sure that if we're going to create a secured site for best transportation yard, that we provide an alternate entrance, um, and ADA parking for the stadium. And so what you'll see there, it's sort of the speckled, um, box, the top left corner of what's colored is our proposed ADA parking. And then, um, further to the right, there's this little baby rectangle there that would be a proposed restroom facility for that side of the, um, the, the stands. Currently there are porta potties that are used for those of you who attend. And this, for us, it's a little bit of scope creep. So this would be an added alternate. It's not necessarily required as part of the project. But, um, we wanted to make sure that as we come to the city and make that request through our pre-application process, we include everything we might be able to do, should we be able to finance that moving forward. So, any questions on the site plan itself?
The little building where the, uh, by the track where you have, where the speckles are, is that, is that the one of the entrances to the field? And does that little building stay?
That little building would come out, the little mobile shed. It's a, a track storage shed, I believe. Uh, maintenance has confirmed that it's okay to relocate it. Um, and then we would provide ADA driveway access into a paved, paved lot at that, at that's location.
Okay. So everything in that little speckled box would become that. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
So for next steps on the project, um, we again met with the city on the 9th of November through a pre-application process. So we appreciate the, um, the opportunity to review the site plan with, uh, with your staff. And, um, we received that feedback and our next steps would be to proceed with the conditional use permit so that we can have proper zoning in place um, to construct. And, um, that, part of that application process requires a traffic impact study. And so right now we're in the process of reviewing, uh, proposals for a traffic impact study. So you might see people out there, um, measuring traffic counts and, and, um, identifying um, patterns in that area. That's what that's going to be about. That report then it would be, um, submitted to the city as a conditional use permit application, um, for their review. And that, as many of you on the city council know, has a process and it's a very specific timeline, notification to neighbors and so forth. While that's going on, our, um, we're going to continue with our design work in order to gain a good estimate of the cost of the project with the intent of coming back to our board in January and talking through what the overall project scope is, how we would propose to finance it and, um, request of authorization to proceed. If we were to gain that, the goal then would be to finalize design, work on procurement while we're doing land use approvals. Um, and the, over the winter with the construction into the spring and summer and the goal of opening and being available for the fall of 2024. As Bob mentioned, if we are not able to hit those targets, um, we would not necessarily lose our transportation provider, but they would be coming from a different, um, lot and location, which would increase the cost to the district for, for those services. So our hope is to be able to keep that service in Gladstone and, um, make those investments on property already owned by the district. And ideally it'll beautify that area as well because it'll be less of a pile of old construction dirt and more of a nice paved lot.
Rita, would it also house, um, visiting buses for the athletic events or would that continue to be in the high school parking lot across the street?
That would continue to be in the high school across the street. Yeah.
Thanks.
And is it possible that if the entire project wasn't done and you were able to at least get the parking done for the school buses, that the rest of it could be done through the fall if necessary, or we could have to have this entire back project done in order to house the buses?
Um, that's a great question. We've talked a little bit with our design team about phasing to be realistic around land use approval processes and delays or different things that come up with construction. So yes, there's an opportunity for phasing there, um, in terms of construction. We do want to be mindful of the fact that fall sports is going on. And so we, we don't want to be under construction on the stadium property when football practices are going and, and so forth. So our hope would be to not stretch out too far so that we're able to benefit from those improvements in the fall.
Rachel, how many buses did you say we have?
We'll have 21. We have 29 under contract, but we're only running 14, um, routes right now. Um, and so we have, we would have extra, um, buses for trips and, um, and other needs at that time.
So it seems like the, you know, whenever you're considering alternatives, it seems like the two alternatives here are a large capital investment that would save us in operational costs long-term. Is there a break even point where, you know, there's this large capital expenditure for this alternative behind the stadium? Um, how long would it take us in increased costs operationally from using that alternate site to make up this capital investment?
It's difficult to estimate without the cost estimate yet. We're not quite to that point where we have that, um, the construction cost estimates from our, from our team. We do spend, uh, $56,000 a year on lease. We do spend $56,000 a year on leased property. As Bob mentioned, our lease is up in June, June 30th. We do have the option for a renewal. However, with the sale of the property, that renewal will trigger rate increases, which are, would be significantly higher, we believe than 56,000. So there again, it would be hard to measure how long we'd be, it would take us to make that back. What's really great about this opportunity is that we received transportation funding from the state of Oregon, and so we can receive a 70% grant on every dollar that we spend in transportation from the state school fund. And, and with the capital improvement that comes over time as we depreciate. So our, our, our proposal to the board will include with those updated cost estimates, what, what you're just describing, how we would fund it, how long will it take us to essentially break even? And how much of that grant, how much of that is going to be grant funded moving forward?
Cool. Thank you.
One question, just on the logistics, would, what's the term, ingress, egress, in and out? Would it always, would it all be directly to Barclay Street then, the street that runs perpendicular to Portland Avenue adjacent to the stadium? Or would you have two entrances and exits?
Great question. We, we looked at both. Ultimately, the exit onto, is it Addy Street? The, there's a significant grade change there. And so it kind of creates this sort of natural topography that would really limit us from being able to access and pull all the way through. So the design has been to be an in and all the way around and back out onto Barclay.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you so much for that. And this would go then probably to our planning commission first and then eventually to the city council or Jackie, can you clarify that?
A conditional use permit can be approved by the planning commission.
Okay. So we may, we may not see it and just trust those volunteers in the city to, to work through the process of this. And then, well, we're very hopeful that this looks like a very good solution for you. And I hope that everything pencils out and that you get the approvals that you need. All right. We'd like to give you an update on a couple of new facilities that are currently underway in our city. Jackie, would you tell us about the new Gladstone Library and Public Works Facility?
Well, I think, I hope everyone has been able to see the progress that's being made on the library downtown. The mayor asked if we could put up the camera. And Clackamas County is in charge of the construction of the building. On the current library site, they have erected a camera so that if you go online, you can see the progress if you have nothing else to watch. I believe we've got a time lapse shot. Is that correct, Tammy?
It's coming. Yes.
And I, I think really what we wanted to just highlight here is how excited everybody is about this. As you, as you see, it's going up, they're on time, they're within budget. And the same with the Oak Lodge project is we believe that they're going to break ground on that facility, hopefully later this month and start on that. This project is proposed to be done next summer. Sorry.
Now you know people are watching you.
Yeah, pretty cool. Right? Yeah.
Jackie, could you explain, because I've been asked before, why is it a Clackamas County project?
So there was several years of litigation concerning this project. I've been here seven and a half years and the city was still trying to build a library. And so the city entered into a settlement agreement with Clackamas County a few years ago that basically they agreed to have one library, two buildings. And the city donated the property. I shouldn't say donated. They pay a dollar a year and we just got their dollar for this year. And they are to build the building there. So the employees are Clackamas County employees. They work at the Oak Lodge facility and the Gladstone facility. The Oak Lodge building, I believe, is 32,000 square foot, or excuse me, 16,000 square foot there. And it's on the Concord site. Does everybody know where the second building is proposed to be built? You go McLaughlin to Concord and take a right and it's where the old
Concord.
Concord Elementary School is. And I think it's also a partnership with the North Clackamas Parks and Rec District. So there's another facility going there. So that building, the Gladstone Library, will have one library director. They will share employees. And it's really been a healing process between the county and the city because we shouldn't be suing each other, especially for a library. And so it's really been a great experience for us this past year. And I think breaking ground and when people finally see that it's happening, it instills their trust in government that we're doing what we said we were going to do. And we're very excited about it.
Other questions or?
Just at 6,000 square foot. Yes. Let me check my notes here.
Just a reminder, when you're speaking, if you could turn your microphone on, please.
Yeah, I don't have it in my fact sheet here, but I know it was more than double the size of the Gladstone.
Originally, I think the Concord site was going to be 19,500 square feet. The sizes in the, in the course of the settlement, it was determined that one half square foot per, per person in the population. So Gladstone population is about 12,000, so 6,000 in Gladstone. And it's about 39,000 population in the other area, so half of that. But I believe that along the way, as the committee worked toward design and coordinated with the development of parks facilities on the same site and the rising costs associated with construction these days, the proposed library in the Oak, proposed facility in the Oak Lodge area is now a little bit smaller. So closer to 16,000 square feet than, than the original 19,500. But because it's adjacent to a park and has other things, you've sort of considered that as part of what's included in that whole project. All right. And we have another facility going in, just a stone's throw away?
We do. Portland Avenue has a lot of activity. And I'm assuming all of you have seen the new Public Works Facility as well. That is what's called a progressive design build. And what that means is that the contractor and the architect were married from the very beginning. And the city said, this is how much money we have. What can you build for it? And there's no change orders along the way. And so the voters approved this in November of 2022. That was measure 3570. And we have borrowed the funds for that. This will be approximately a 5,000 square foot facility. It will include work rooms, meeting conference room, offices, locker rooms, laundry, mudrooms, and really allow our public works facility to be operated as a critical use facility in emergencies. Right now we have porta potties out back for our employees. And this building that is now gone was back in the, the late 1960s, early 70s. And so we were very grateful that the voters approved that measure. And I think seeing how we built this building on time and in budget really, again, instilled the, the trust in the local government. And so that is our third building because we like to say the city hall and police department were our first two. Public Works is the third and the library is the fourth. So all of our civic facilities will have been rebuilt here by next summer. So the public works facility should be done. We're hoping for May of 2024. So it would be open and operational before the library. We just scheduled a walkthrough for our city council because the walls and the ceiling and the roof is on now. So we're very excited about that project as well.
All right. Any questions about the two buildings? All right. We have one more item on the agenda we wanted to talk about. Well, actually, let me, let me squeeze in one more thing in here. Our city council this year in Gladstone has met a couple of times with representatives of other cities in this region who have youth councils, a group made up of volunteers, generally high school students who serve as, in a variety of capacities, sort of advisors to the city on issues related to youth. But in some of the cities we talked to, actually initiating programs of their own and working with the city to do some things that really address issues of concern to young people. Sometimes it's fundraising, sometimes it's just helping people understand what's going on and, and educational. And when we had our goal-setting meeting back in January, we decided that looking at possibly organizing a committee like this here in Gladstone was a high priority for us. So we've heard from representatives in the city of Happy Valley. We've heard representatives in city government in Oregon City, which also has a committee. And we have somebody coming from West Lynn at the early part of 2024 to talk about it. And we had a work session, as you did this week, but this is the second work session for both these groups this week. Yeah, we want to avoid the holidays and get as much as we can. And, and one of the items on our agenda was, you know, whether we would continue this process of looking into how to do a local youth council. As I said, in many of the cities that have them now, the councils are made up of high school students. We have one public high school here in Gladstone, but we would not limit the, the involvement in this to students who attend that. It could be open to private school students who live in the community or, or those who are homeschooled at the high school age. But for many of the communities, it's kind of a group that mostly meets during the school year itself. It would be an opportunity for students who are engaged in groups and activities in their school that require them to do some community service to get some active community service in the community. But it would also be some exposure to local government and involvement in that. And I, I want other counselors to share your dreams of this and, and say a little bit more about what we're looking for. Amy, the principal of our, of our high school is here tonight to hear about the concept. And hopefully we'll be, you know, Gladstone High School will have, be a big part of what we do. But are there others on the council who want to share something about your vision for this kind of a program as we continue to consider it? And, and maybe get some feedback from the school board members too, about your thoughts about something like this? Or if you've experienced in other settings?
We're saying that Luke and Vanessa have both offered graciously extra time because we all have so much of that to, to kind of take that first step and talk about how, what, what, what they're, what we're looking for. They know what we're looking for, I believe, and just how the, what their vision looks like. And I think the two of them could probably tell everyone how that's going to happen because they have the vision.
Counsel Roberts?
Well, thank you, Mary. I think your summation definitely hit the, hit the points that I was going for. You know, when you look around at these other youth councils that we see in other cities, not only around our state, but growing in our nation, the two big things are advisory to the existing council as well as creation and forming of projects that are most important to them and that they believe affect their generation the most. And so, you know, most of you know, that was the basis in which I ran my campaign on was bringing in more voices. I think it was just at our regular meeting this month, our mayor brought up that we have someone from, on our council from ages 20, 30, 40, 50, 60, and I think as high as 70.
Yeah.
You said it, not me. Representing our city. And so that's not something you often see elsewhere. In many cases, participating in an organization like this is only for those who are at a retirement age or have much more time on their hand. And so you don't often see that in the younger generations. So certainly I'm proud of our city that we can sort of champion that and hopefully see that in other cities, but also bring in more voices, more youth and continue to join that trend, but also be a little bit of a trendsetter with it. Thank you, Mayor.
So I would echo everything that Counselor Roberts said. But I also want to include, I think nationwide, we have all seen that this generation is ready to get involved and they're going to be game changers. And I think this is a great opportunity for them to learn how local government works because that's really where it starts. As we've seen with our own council, we now have a state representative who started in local government. And it's fantastic. I think that Counselor Roberts is great. He still has, you know, his lived experiences will be valuable in connecting with these youth. I think most of us know that, you know, I just went through election recently and then I, all of my kids have gone through Gladstone. And they are ages 19 to 24 now. Wow. And so, you know, I kind of dialed in with them. And I also found that when I was running my campaign, a lot of their friends and them just didn't understand. They just didn't really understand how it works. And this is a fantastic opportunity for the ones who want to learn to learn. And I think that what we've kind of talked about, and I hope we're all, we all agree on this, there have been some, I don't know, some restrictions on, on the other city youth advisory councils that I'm hoping that we'll be able to get rid of, whether that be, you know, a certain grade point average or whatever. Because we know that's not always an indicator. So I'm looking forward to opening this up and removing as many barriers as possible for youth in this community to, to participate.
And I'd actually love to be included or involved in a, you know, being an educator and, you know, I mean, I've known Luca a very long time and I'm so proud of him. I will not cry. But what a great example for our high school, you know, students to just to be involved and to get involved and, and, you know, to start out this way. And I mean, it's just such a great experience. But as an educator too, I get really excited about hearing about this because I know our kids are the same age and they know, my daughter will tell me things that I think that are in the news that I haven't got to yet. And I'm like, well, tell me about it. Like they are very, very, very involved right now. And I think we need, really need to hold on to that tight and, and run with that and, and help move them. And I agree with you that restrictions on like GPAs should not, you know, be the, the, the roadblock for students. So I would love to, you know, if you, you know, be involved as much as I can be with, with what you're doing.
I, I echo everything Tracy just said. I'm happy as much as I can. I'm happy to be involved. Youth advisory and young adult advisory committees is something I've, I have put together quite a bit actually in my, in my career separately in higher education and just a few things to sort of a few, just things to flag. I think it's a fantastic idea. I think it's really important. This, obviously this generation is on fire in a lot of ways. And they also know that in a lot of ways, while we have a lot of great possibilities, there are also certain parts of our world that are kind of on fire and, and, and they've got energy and vision. And so I think it's a great idea. I would say a couple of things. One, from past experience, I would just caution the group to be very, very clear about, to get very clear. Obviously I don't know that you're in this. Obviously, I don't know that you're in this point of the process yet, but to get very clear about the scope or purview of this advisory committee, of this advisory council. So one, to be clear about what exactly it is that they will and won't actually be able to influence. There's nothing that kills motivation like taking a kid's time and energy, especially, I mean, kids today, their schedules are so pulled in so many directions. And then at the back end, not actually having clearly felt like they influenced anything at all. So being very clear about what the scope and purview can be and will be. That is, I encourage you to to think really hard about that. The other thing is to think really hard about what are the the key pieces of mutual benefit? So obviously, you know, from the city's perspective, there are clear pieces of benefit of having a youth advisory council. And in in addition to outlining exactly what you envision those to be, also being really clear about, you know, kids, like I said, kids, we all know kids today, especially high school kids who are looking toward their future. I mean, their schedules are nuts, truly. And so to be as clear as possible about what it is that they're going to get out of this experience. So not just an opportunity to learn, but are, which is very important. But for instance, are they going to get, what what is, what are the concrete skills they're going to gain? Are they going to get assistance, for instance, in incorporating those skills into resumes? Are they going to have any opportunities to receive? Mayor Mill, you, I think it was you, mentioned community service. Is there any opportunity with, say, civics instructors at the high school or political science instructors or whatever, to think about ways of integrating into the curriculum or integrating, you know, additional credit opportunities or what have you? So any any pieces like that 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 can be thought about in terms of mutual benefit for the kids and for their families? But I think it's a really great idea. And Gladstone's a perfect place for it. We're small. Honestly, a lot of times, big challenges with things, these kinds of things end up being logistics. Luckily, you know, we're small and people don't, the kids hopefully won't have to travel for a long time in between different activities. And so anyway, I just, I think it's a great idea and I'm happy to, you know, as much as it is helpful, I'm happy to help.
Written your name down. Luke, Vanessa, Tracy, Jeannie. Going around. All right, Donna.
Thank you, Jeannie, for reminding us about the mutual benefit component because Counselor Gillington said it well on Tuesday evening. That anytime we ask for the public's input, that we aren't a body that deserves their attention. We should go out and seek it. We don't demand that they come to us. And so we need to figure out, you know, where we provide value to others. So I appreciate you bringing that up and just be added to our consideration.
Can I add one additional comment? I'm encouraged to hear how many of the other Clackamas County folks you're engaging with as well. And if there's opportunity, once the youth advisory council is, I think it would be nice for them to also be able to interface with the other youth advisory councils. We just recently, as a school board, got to go to a meet and greet that was all other school board and superintendents from around Clackamas County. And it is kind of nice to be able to have that still local, but a little bit bigger than just Gladstone experience and be able to find some crossover of, you know, of mutual beneficially conversations about what's the same and what's different and how we can learn about those things and kind of as a region embrace that.
Well, unfortunately, we we're aware of some that are very close to us. And we know that among those that that are in our area, there are, there had been statewide gatherings. And I think the Happy Valley folks also went to a national gathering in in Washington DC. And I know that this school district provides a a unique experience and has for many years for young people to get exposure to a lot of our, well, not only Washington DC, but much of the East Coast. I've been to board meetings and heard about that and it's just amazing and have family members who have who have participated in it. But those kinds of opportunities and connections with others, I think will just add to the the value of this experience. So, yeah, they're not going to serve in a vacuum here. We'll be aware of those, the importance of those connections. I really appreciate the feedback from the school board members too, because, you know, it's good to know that this is something that we would embrace as a community. And so many of the issues that this generation is concerned about are directly connected to their educational experience as well. So and the and the setting and and the the environment and and all the rest that that they that they experience in school. So Principal Mike Sell, I hope that we have given you some good information. Well, I think the good thing is being still in the developmental stage, all this kind of feedback, it just helps us to, you know, to fine tune this in a way that'll best serve the needs of the young people that we hope to engage and the needs of the community that they hope, that we hope they will engage with. So, thank you.
So I think what you've heard is we're in.
Yes.
And I and I I'm assuming that Luke and Vanessa will probably be the point people. I would just encourage you to make sure that you bring in the high school administration early on in this process because they can help shape and help think through what that would look like and how they would recruit kids and how they could make it successful. I've got something to piggyback on this.
Sure.
That's okay.
That's great.
Okay. So a number of years ago, there was a system in place in Gladstone that was called the Gladstone Youth Coalition. And the people that started that was Frank Church, who was the police chief at that time, approached me and said, would you be interested in working with us and creating this coalition? At that time, there was, the county was really, they received major grant dollars to work with local communities to create youth coalitions with the purpose of to help stem the risky behaviors that student, that kids were involved in. And you could imagine all the risky behaviors those could possibly be. And so the coalition was formed. Frank and I served as the co-chairs of that initially. And there were a number of people from the public service, law enforcement side of things. So Clackamas County, Oregon Liquor and Control Commission, the Juvenile Department, Sheriff's Office, everybody, all those entities had places at the table, as did school officials, as did some parents, as did some kids, with the result being that to work towards activities and grant seeking to go forward with some initiatives and some efforts. For a number of reasons, it lasted for a few years and then began to kind of peter out. And recently, Clackamas County has contacted us again and asked if we would have some interest in looking at reforming the Gladstone Youth Coalition. They pointed to an area in East Clackamas County that just recently received a grant for $300,000 to help support efforts within that area. The, I have talked with Chief Smurber about that. We actually got a meeting coming up here in a few days to have some conversations about what that might look like going forward. So this is just a heads up. This is just a preview that we're working on something that eventually is going to bubble up with possibly a strategy on how we want to move forward with a second effort that would involve how we're working and serving our kids.
Thank you, Superintendent Stewart. That's good to know. And it it is a nice, it's nice when some things kind of come together at the same time. So that's very helpful. But we'll be watching the progress on that.
Amy, are you the contact for the high school for what they've talked about here? Okay, so Luke and Vanessa, I'm assuming you would know how to get ahold of Amy.
Now she has to take our meetings.
I'm assuming you know where the principal's office, but not for bad reasons, right? So just big direct contact with her. Amy's got a picture of which board members have said, hey, I've got a real interest in this and will move forward with that.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Amy.
Do any of the other youth coalitions that you've been hearing from have articulation through Clackamas Community College, for example, for potential credits?
I don't know that they've mentioned that. I know that there's a lot of opportunity through that, through the high school itself, but for this particular activity, I'm not sure.
There there will be a path. I don't know what the path is, but there will be a path.
Good. All right. And we have, we, when we go around, went around and did introductions earlier, we introduced one of our newest city staff members, Marcy Jory, who was hired in July of this year for the role of Economic Development and Tourism Director. Is that the correct title?
Not as fancy as director, as coordinator.
Coordinator, very good. And the the school board has expressed some some interest in appointing a liaison in that capacity or in that general area to that work in the city. So Jackie, did you want to introduce this topic a little bit more?
I can. And I also wanted to segue in that Marcy will also be helping with the youth council establishment because we do need a staffed person for this because there'll be meetings, there'll be minutes. And so we'll also want to make sure that Marcy and myself are involved as that evolves. And we're very, we're very excited about that. So the city is very committed also to economic development and we created a limited duration, two-year position. We did all this work on the downtown revitalization plan. We have a new library coming, Public Works. And so we decided, let's, let's spend some quality time with our Gladstone businesses. And we have an urban renewal district. And so I just want to let Marcy kind of introduce herself a little bit and then talk about the connection that we've had with the business socials and maybe what we're looking for from one of the school board members that want to work with our business liaison, who is Counselor Cook and Marcy.
Thank you. It's been a really exciting and fun time in Gladstone. I had no idea all the things that were kind of bubbling under the surface when I came to work here. And it's just been a really great opportunity. And a lot of what I've been doing is building relationships with the business owners, property owners, getting to know community stakeholders like Clackamas Community or Clackamas County Economic Development. I've recently been doing outreach with the Gladstone High School Business, she's a business pathways teacher, Mrs. Salisbury, Ms. Salisbury and Mr. Long. And we actually even wrote them a grant letter or a letter of support for a big grant they're doing for the Business Pathways Program. So this youth council is really exciting for me personally. Happy to to work with that. And let's see here. What was the second thing, Jackie?
I think you might want to touch on the business social.
Yes, that we're having. Yes. One of the things that we've been doing in the in the fostering relationships with the downtown or with businesses in general in the city of Gladstone is Sierra, our Counselor Cook and I created a business social and it was just an opportunity for business owners, property owners, managers to get together and get to know each other. We had very few talking points. It was very casual. And I can see how that can evolve into maybe a little bit more educational opportunities. We had about 30 people, I think, show up, including State Representative Hartman. We had folks from the Business Recovery Center. We had former city council members show up. And it was just a really great supportive time. We're going to be doing those about once a quarter. And they'll evolve in what they look like, but right now it's about business support. It's about building relationships. It's about building trust and getting education and information out into the community. So what we're looking for is another liaison to work with economic development and this and the businesses from the school board. Jackie probably has a little bit more to add to that, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
Yeah. And the only thing that we would ask time wise is, I think the socials are every quarter.
Every quarter.
Yeah. And to maybe attend with Counselor Cook and just to kind of build relationships and listen. And Bob, you had mentioned that there was interest for that, but I don't know if you have selected anybody to do that.
I believe Chair Tracy can answer that question.
Oh, I knew you were going to do that and I don't have my notes in front of me. We do have people assigned. It's on a Google Doc on my computer. And now I'm panicking because I don't know it off the top of my head. I knew you were going to say something. And if any of the board members remember. Yes, I will look. It's, we do, we do, we, yes, yes, Stacy, it's you. We're going to turn it over to you now. So, you know, we, when we did our groups, when we did our groupings at the beginning of the year, I created a Google document. And one of them, I don't know if we said, I have it. I will send it to you. I do. It might, it's Charlie.
Our people are here. So who is it? Just raise your hand.
Well, we all changed because we got new members. We all kind of, you know, we all, we changed it. So it is, I just want, for on the record, it is done. It is in a Google Doc.
All volunteer as tribute.
We, yeah, it's, I think I shared the Google Doc with you, Jennifer. I think it's called like Glad. And it's color coded, right?
Rotate who is attending.
Correct. Yes, yes.
I will say as, so to Charlie, who we've decided, you know, it's it's painless. You know, as Marcy explained, it's not a, there's not a large agenda. It's not very formal. I think one of our main goals with doing these business socials is, you know, our community, you know, most of the time we're having a ball. Sometimes we hit some bumps in the road. And so when those bumps in the road happen, we're able to get through it better when we already have warm relationships cultivated with everybody in the community. And so the hope here is just to build and strengthen relationships with business owners, like you mentioned, council members, school board members, so that when challenges do arise, we already have these warm relationships that we can lean on to support each other with. So looking forward to working with you. If you need a backup or a plus one, I would also be interested in.
Always welcome.
You never need it. Maybe we can make sure that the invites are sent to the whole school board if anyone's free. There's usually good treats.
It makes the business owners and the property owners feel very supported when people in local government and, you know, the the community at large show up to just get to know them and see what their needs are. And like Counselor Cook was saying, a lot of it is about building those relationships so that there is trust and they have somebody that they know they can reach out to when things do get tough and things do get bumpy.
I have a quick question. When you're talking about business owners, is that inclusive of like non nonprofit leaders as well in the community? Or is it just like small and large business owners in Gladstone?
We would welcome all of them. I mean, really nonprofits are also doing business at some level. And so, you know, we would definitely welcome them to attend.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Well, thank you. And, you know, the first time I got to know a board member, Stacy Moncrief, was when about six or seven years ago, when we were beginning to do our downtown revitalization work in this community. And as a resident of the downtown area, one of the few single family homes along Portland Avenue, she was very involved and very supportive and took the position, I distinctly remember it in a meeting near the end of this, where a lot of people were saying, you know, this kind of development might not be good for me as a resident, as a homeowner. It might make things more crowded. Parking might get more difficult. But she took the position that it is going to be better for the community as a whole, and she wholeheartedly supported it. And I sent her a little message online to tell her how much I appreciated that. Because I think that's kind of the way we operate, both as a school board and as and as a city council, is to recognize the larger scope of the work we do and the important connections that we make with one another and the importance of of how the little things that we do in one area really benefit the community. When Luke talked about the the age groupings of our council, you know, people in their twenties and thirties and forties, yes, I am the one who is now, as of a few months ago, in his seventies. I've, I've been around public education for a long, long time. Back when a time when it mostly focused on, you know, what they used to call the three Rs, reading, writing and arithmetic. And I know that now. And I know that now the scope of what we do in public schools is much broader. And I am glad to see, you know, Gladstone, like Bob said the other night, and I've said on occasions, talking about this, punching above its weight in so many areas, including leading the way in some of the new technical education programs that we have at the high school. And now trying to link that up with people in the business community too, who can benefit from that education and training that's going on. So that's why we do this. That's why, Matt, I'm glad you are now part of the board. And, and I'm glad that Sierra is part of our council and all the others of you who have business and involvement and can relate to that and know it's, know it's connection and important. I will make one other announcement. Didn't think about doing this before. And I know she wouldn't do it herself, but Sierra Cook, who was appointed to our city council earlier this year and then elected to the city council in November, has opened a bookstore, not here in Gladstone, but in downtown Milwaukee. And I know that she offers a discount to educators who buy books there. So if you are a supporter of reading, which I think most of you are, and, and a supporter of locally owned businesses, that's an opportunity for, for you and educators you may know to, you know, to do, to do good things for, for this community, to maintain a locally owned business. Marcy, was there anything else you wanted to add about?
I do not think so.
Okay.
But thank you.
And just going back to that, so Jennifer did find the, the document and that part wasn't on it. So Charlie, it's, it's you. It's a different, yeah. So we found the one with the facilities, the workload, the equity, and then the liaison to the city council. So I think that's what we were thinking, where we were signing up to come to meetings. But then Charlie said he, it was him. So.
Will you all just get me your contact information? I'll make sure that you know.
I, I knew I had it.
Before we get too, too far away from it too, I just want to appreciate Marcy. Like you have done such a phenomenal job. You've been in your role for such a short period of time. But hearing from the local businesses, they feel overwhelmingly supported and embraced. And they, they have a really easy pathway to liaise with the city, both for reactive concerns that come up and then just proactively, just to make sure information is flowing both ways. And as a local business owner, I get your updates to businesses as well. And they're just being so well served by you. So thank you very much for your work.
Some of our focus on business in Gladstone has been focused on Portland Avenue. The downtown revitalization program that we had and developed and finally adopted some zoning changes for this year, started focusing there. But I want to remind you that McLaughlin Boulevard is another commercially zoned area that is important in this community. And, and the automotive industry is along there also need young people trained to do repair and maintenance of automobiles and the growing number of electric vehicles. And through our community colleges and maybe programs that where young people is still in high school can connect to a community college program, that's one way again of making that linkage. And then the other commercial area in Gladstone is over on the 82nd Drive and near the Safeway and that area. And, and that is where the, the High Rocks, High Rock Steak and Shops, who, who catered our meal tonight is located. So we're grateful to have those connections, those commercial areas in this city. I hope they can offer, offer job opportunities for young people. And I hope that young people who are training and looking forward to a career that keeps them in the Gladstone area will find a way to, to connect with those, with those opportunities. We get some important information from the, from the state that keeps economic records. There are about 250 people who both live in Gladstone and work in Gladstone, according to these figures. There are 3,000 people in Gladstone or who, who live outside of Gladstone, who come and work in the city of Gladstone, including a lot of the teachers and staff in our schools. There are about 5,000 people who live in Gladstone, but leave and work somewhere else. If, if we could get a whole bunch of people to trade jobs, just think how much more vital our local economy would be, how, how much less traffic there would be on our freeways, how much less need there would be to even be discussing tolling of our roads. But this has long been primarily a bedroom community. People live here and work somewhere else, or people come from someone else. Maybe not a long distance, but, but they do. But focusing on economic development and education and the connections that are formed through the families who bring their children through this school from, you know, from preschool and kindergarten all the way up through high school, makes us that kind of a close knit community where we can all work together to benefit one another at a family level, at an individual level, at a community level. And so it's a pleasure to be working and volunteering in leadership in, in a community like that. I am so grateful to all the, the schools and what they do, just for my own family and for what I know they offer to the community. I hope that we as a city are beginning to offer more and more things that will enhance the life of the families who have their children in our schools here. As Bob pointed out in a meeting last night, the work session with the council, it's maybe what, 18% of the families, of the, of the residents, of families and households in Gladstone have children of school age. Many more don't have that direct connection to the school. Yet years ago, when the school did the bond measure to expand and improve the high school facilities, the overwhelming support for that measure came from voters over the age of 55 who didn't have so much personally at stake, but who believed in the value of education and a public school system in a community. And many of whom maybe were part of that when they were growing up and stuck around and put their children through it too. And so we're unique in that way in, in this state. We have that connection, that commitment, that support. And I'm grateful that we have chosen to do this, to gather together and to share the, the things that we have in common and the way that we can serve this community. Tracy, Bob, Jackie, anybody, any other?
I'm just impressed that you listened to me. You're the first person that's ever done that.
Well, Ed, as, as many in the community now know, the, the school board is facing some, some tough decisions and, you know, some work in the next few months. And we want to be supportive of them as they work for that and know that we recognize that it's a challenge. I'm hoping that our city administrator, Jackie Betts, will eventually pass Bob Stewart's record in terms of number of years serving the city before she retires. So that I, so that our council will not have to go through the, the search and recruitment process for a new administrator. But, but I know that we are on your side and we back you and we are confident in the, in your ability to, you know, to make a great selection in finding a replacement for this wonderful man who served this community for so long. All right. I think that's all we have on the agenda tonight. Anybody else have anything that we should have said or didn't say? If not, we are adjourned at 7:30 PM.